Can you hear me? Okay, cool. Miranda, Jennifer, let me know when you guys are there. I can't hear anyone.
We're both here.
Yes.
Just a matter of giving.
Macy, we were expecting everyone, or maybe not Tom, right?
Probably not Tom.
Yes, that's correct. I'm trying to start my video. Okay, there we go. Yes, we are expecting everybody tonight except for Tom. I see everybody except for trustee Corvalon.
I'm going to have my video off for a while while I finish eating my dinner.
Well, we can probably get started in time. You can hop in whenever she gets here. Tom will not be here, I don't think, tonight. He had told me he's in Chicago. And sends his best. And I don't think he'll be joining us. So tonight, well, actually, when you're ready. Let me see, we can get started.
All right.
Let's see if the start button.
Mayor Giblin.
Here.
Do you, Mayor Giblin, do you just want to note for the record what time we're calling the meeting to order? It's on the audio.
Thank you. We're calling the meeting to order at 7:02. On Wednesday, Tuesday, September 13th.
Thank you. Trustee Blakemore.
Here.
Trustee Corvalon. I don't see trustee Corvalon online yet, but let's note for the record that she should be joining us this evening. And then we have trustee Kims Isma.
Here.
And trustee Severs.
Here.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks for taking the roll call, Macy. So let's move right into discussion items.
Can I note for the record that Mayor Protem Mahold is absent? I know we spoke about it, but I'd like to note for the record during roll call that Mayor Protem Mahold is absent for this meeting tonight. Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, thank you for recording that. So we'll likely open up, these are discussion items, two discussion items. We'll cut in. You know, we want to be done, we'd like to be done in a couple hours. And let me know, you know, what time you think, and we were thinking, Miranda and I were thinking roughly an hour and a half, maybe more for annexation, and then some time to talk about the trustee vacancy towards the end. And we will likely open up for public comment for each of these discussion items, limited to three minutes per person. So go ahead if we could, I think Jennifer, this is Eric and Jennifer, so I don't know who wants to introduce the same, but please go ahead.
Go ahead, trustee Kims Isma.
Yeah, this is the same document that was presented at a previous BOT meeting. But as this is a new BOT, it's probably worth going over it. It's not intended to be my recommendation in any way. I've tried to put together a list of processes, procedures, you know, application materials and just and review criteria for what an annexation for the town of Nederland might look like. Annexation is a right given to the town by the state constitution. Currently, we have an IGA in place with Boulder County that we extended until the end of this year. That it doesn't necessarily prohibit annexation, but it essentially does and gives Boulder County the authority to determine whether or not we annex territory that is available for annexation to the town. The other thing to note here is that I was also made aware of the existence of a so-called super IGA agreement. I'm not sure, Miranda, if you ever looked into that anymore, but the super IGA looks to have been signed, a copy that I have of it by the time of Netherlands. I've got echo from Colin, Rita, three. That's a little hard to talk through things. And that super IGA essentially bars annexation outright, except in cases where stated in a in a subsequent IGA that the town might have with the county, which we did have. So when our current IGA expires, the super IGA will kick in. The super IGA seems to expire next year. So it's not, you know, that relevant because we don't have to sign on to it again if we don't want to. So.
Are we, are we signed on to an IGA, a super IGA right now?
We are, but not until 2023. So it expires fairly soon. So the idea here is that we didn't think it would be prudent to allow the IGA to expire without putting into place a policy of the town's own for how annexation should be handled by Netherlands. And this, what I put together here is, you know, kind of the laundry, like the kitchen sink in terms of what's what's possible that I helped, that I gleaned from other towns that have similar annexation procedures that Attorney Mattson provided the examples of. And so I produced kind of a first round of notes that Attorney Mattson then edited. I think the one thing on here that we never managed to edit out was under review criteria, it still says that the annexation is consistent with a three-mile plan. And then in parentheses after that paragraph, it says required by state law. That's a review criteria number seven in the agenda, and that is not required by state law. Three-mile plans are not required.
Trustee Kims Isma, they are actually, they are required.
Oh, they are?
Yes. So if you're going through with annexation, if you're, if you have an annexation application in place, then then there is a requirement for a three-mile plan. It doesn't have to necessarily be put in place beforehand. It can be implemented as the annexation is proceeding.
Okay, I was under the impression that the three-mile plan criteria was removed at some point. So.
It's Miranda. I just want to really quickly note for the record that trustee Corvalon is now here. Carry on.
And so the board discussed this. Generally, there were not many issues when we discussed it before. The main kind of question that we came out with from that previous discussion was at what point, if any, would a townwide election be triggered? And that could be based on the size of the annexation. Ten acres is the size that I believe the town of Lyons uses as the kind of breakpoint for when an election is triggered. But we could have our own criteria.
Actually, Eric, I'm pretty sure they have five miles or five acres on their document that you have submitted with this.
Okay.
I can show you the page.
Yeah, somebody, somebody had 10. It might not have been Lyons. But, you know, I only put 10 there as a placeholder. Again, I was not making a recommendation. It is a placeholder for the kind of criteria that we might put in place to trigger an election. And that's all I've got on the, on the matter. Attorney Mattson had any other comments?
So one other comment that I have relates to process. As trustee Kims Isma mentioned, there is the IGA agreement with Boulder County related to annexation that's been extended through December of this year, the end of this year. And that, you know, you, one option is extending, doing an additional extension of that agreement. You don't, you don't have to, you don't have to have an agreement in place. And the other thing that I do want to mention is, you know, say you can't get through this annexation or you, you don't have a final annexation working policy prior to the end of December. You could put in place a moratorium on annexations. So that is a possibility.
Yeah, one thing I'll say is that when we did, when we did this and when we extended the IGA, there was a lot of concern from, on the community's part about whether or not we would, in fact, get this done in time. And so I think we should make our best effort to do so. And only rely on moratoriums and or, you know, I don't think, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote to extend at this point the IGA as it currently is written, but a moratorium would be something I would look at as a last resort personally.
Anything else you all want to decide on the aim before we open up for clarifying questions? Any other, so trustees, is there any clarifying questions that you want to ask before we do public comment?
Well, I mean, shouldn't we all have a comment first, or you want to go public first?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I guess I see that as, I mean, I guess I'm used to the PC routine where we do clarifying questions and go around and make sure we're clear on things. And then then we open up to the public and let the public comment and talk. And then, once we close public comment, and then we and we discuss, yeah, whatever you wanted to say, open ears.
Oh, okay. I have three things that are really important to me. The first one I just mentioned, the lines is five acres for trigger election. And I think that's, that seems to be the right number for me. I think it's really important that any annexation gets given to the town people to make the decision, not just the planning commission and the BOT, is it affects everybody? And that also keeps it from, you know, being something that, you know, we're maybe potentially helping a friend or something like that. It keeps it much more fair. So I would change that to five acres, and that is how town alliance does it. And then my main concern not only is acreage, but it's density. And I would like something that would trigger an election if, for instance, it's just a number I'm throwing out, like the adjacent zoning that I would, because the land has to be adjacent to town. So whatever it's adjacent to the zoning of that area, I wouldn't like to see the density more than three or four times that adjacent zoning without that going to an election as well. So that could be something on just two acres. But if they're going to build 60 units on two acres, I think that the people of town of Netherlands need to weigh in on that just as much as we need to weigh on it. Density is just, if not more important to me than acreage. Because that's really what's going to impact people's lives. And then the third point that I really want to have something in here, and I don't think other towns do it, so I'm curious how they deal with this. But I would like something to be of the, and I'm not wording it right, but all approved annexations should not be allowed to be amended for, and I'm throwing out this number, 10 years, which would mean they couldn't come back to the planning commission and ask for a change of use, get an SRU, change the whole plan a year later, or sell it to somebody else who has big plans or big whatever that wasn't what we approved. I'm really concerned about that. And I'd like to have some sort of clause in there that says there's a certain amount of time that nothing can be changed from what is, what is approved. So, you know, they want to do development, that's got to get approved at the time of the annexation. All cards have to be out. There can't be any, you know, oh, well, now we're going to add on here and all this acre, we're going to put a bunch of condos here. There has to be a time limit, maybe 10 years, number I'm thinking. And that would, if they sold the land, I would imagine the 10 years would start from the day it got annexed, as opposed to the day it got sold. Those are just the three points that are really important to me, and I wouldn't approve any annexation policy without this being properly discussed.
Thanks, Tanya. Those are all very good points. Yeah, it'd be interesting to do, I thought, I thought about the density and like some kind of, I mean, three to four times. It'd be interesting to do some more research and just comparison to figure out like what kind of
Yeah, right, because
the actual multiplier that triggers it, you know.
Right, say it's next to Old Town, you guys have really small lots. So you could take an acre, and I don't know what the actual zoning is, but I imagine you can get six houses on, six duplexes on an acre in Old Town without it being out of the normal zoning. So I think, and I'm not sure, we need somebody who actually looked this up. I'm just thinking in my own map of my head. So, you know, it would be significant if all of a sudden, you know, that was smaller and tighter and like, you know, a huge development was put on there, kind of like the Boulder County Housing Authority. All of a sudden, you guys have that next to your neighborhood. You know, you should be able to vote on that. I'm not saying it shouldn't be allowed. I just think the people should have, you know, the neighbors should have a voice. Shouldn't just be us.
I agree.
I do like the idea of it being triggered by adjacent zoning. I think that's really clean. It's something that's guaranteed to be in place. It's fairly uncomplicated. But if we were trying to, you know, do anything between zones or kind of base it on density, that might be a bit messier. So I do think that zoning, zoning makes sense. That's a good, great idea.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Attorney Mattson. For seven under review criteria. Is there a reference? Do we have a, is there something, is, can you tell me what the Colorado revised statutes references for that particular requirement?
The three-mile plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I heard your question, just getting off mute. It's 3112105 E1. So it says, this is a section that relates to limitations. It says the following limitations shall apply to all annexations. And then E1 starts out and says no annexation may take place that would have the effect of extending a municipal boundary more than three miles in any direction from any point in any one year. Within said three-mile area, the contiguity required may be achieved by annexing a platted street or alley. And then, then it's this next sentence, prior to completion of any annexation within the three-mile area, the municipality shall have in place a plan for that area that generally describes the proposed location, character, and extent of streets, subways, bridges, waterways, waterfronts, parkways, playgrounds, squares, parks, aviation fields, other public ways, grounds, open space, public utilities, and terminals for water, light, sanitation, transportation, and power to be provided by the municipality and proposed land uses for the area.
Great, thank you.
I have another question. At which point would we recommend the, a traffic study be paid for by the person who wants annexation? Would that be related to the density or to the vote? If it triggers an election, then they also, I mean, obviously, it says that will not impact the roadways and we, the town can blah, blah, blah. But I mean, you know, we only have one main road in and out of town. So it would be interesting to know what annexation would cause, and that shouldn't be something we pay for.
To me, it seems, Tanya, that maybe step 10 there, the revised annexation impact report, that would be a good place to have something like a traffic study in that report.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing that I didn't forget to mention was that there was also an idea that if we chose, we could identify primary planning areas at some point in the future for the town, and that could even be maybe even included as part of the comprehensive planning process. And if we did choose to do that, then those could have exemptions from elections because the comprehensive plan would have gone through public process already.
Why would we want to do that? Why would we want to do anything that would reduce the chance of an election? I mean, what's the, is it just to make it easier for annexations?
So let's say we went through a whole, like, rigorous public process with the comprehensive plan. You know, we pay 200 grand or whatever it costs to get someone in to facilitate that process and act as a mediator. And through that process, it becomes clear that the residents of the town are interested in annexing a certain property, right? That property could be included in a primary planning area within the comprehensive plan. It already would have gone through extensive public you know, vetting, and so it could have an expedited process in terms of annexation. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there that that was an idea that was
Yeah, I see that. I'm personally opposed to anything that takes it away from the public voting.
Jesse, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose, just a clarifying question. What we're trying to achieve here is get ourselves aligned with how we want to handle annexation requests in the future, once our IGA expires. Is that our main goal for today's meeting? Or for this, this topic, I guess? Maybe we don't achieve that today, but we're, we're working on it and moving the ball down the field on that, on that criteria. Is that, is that correct? That's what we're, that's what we're here doing right now, talking about annexation? What are we trying to, what are we trying to achieve here?
I think, I think that's correct, but also we are time limited here. So I know that Jesse, you and Billy are both new to the BOT, but this has been in front of us a few times as an issue. So we've been working on this and we'd like to get it done before that IGA expires. And in order to do that, we would need to amend town code. So we're, we're talking about giving town staff direction to craft an ordinance that we are in general agreement with, that we can then bring through the public process and get people's input on, so that we can get our annexation procedures in place before that IGA expires, or at least around the same time.
Okay, so we're not actually trying to complete an annexation itself right now. We're just trying to establish a policy for how we're going to deal with annexation as we move forward, once our IGA expires.
Exactly right. There is no specific project that has come across the BOT for approval.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, just to be clear, I mean, tonight, the question before the board is, does, and maybe I should read this upfront. Does the Board of Trustees have any questions, comments, or recommendations regarding this initial annexation ordinance proposal? So we are, we are working towards that. Today, we're, we're asking questions and giving comments and learning more.
We also should know that that was copied from the last time this was presented, right? So it's not the first time that this that we've, that this has been initial. So it's not really initial anymore.
So is it, is it the second, second draft, or, you know, I mean, because I saw, I think it said June, you know, there's a YouTube link here on the the beginning of the aim from June or July. Yeah. So is that the only other meeting that, June 7th? Was that the one that was, the only one that was totally focused on this?
I think we discussed it, and in discussing it, this was what came out of that discussion. And then we discussed this. And our work was said to come back with recommendations regarding the election trigger or any other thoughts that we had about it for this work session, that we could move it into a draft ordinance phase.
Good. Well, I mean, that was all time well spent. This needs to be discussed, so we bring something good into the public eye when we get there. I don't really have any questions or comments specifically. I appreciate some of the suggestions that have been made about acreage and density and, and, you know, I like the idea of and I guess Attorney Mattson, can we amend, you know, can we put some kind of restriction on, on the fact that a, you know, that a annexation clause or terms of annexation can't be amended for a certain amount of time after, after it's approved? 10 years, whatever, you know, whether, whether that property changes hands or not, that's something we can do.
Yeah, I need to think about how that would be done. Typically, a development agreement is part of an annexation process. And so the development agreement would be an agreement entered into with the town and the developer for the property that's being annexed. And you could, my thought on this is that the ordinance could specify that the development improvement agreement has language in it that prohibits amendments for a certain period of time.
Okay. So that might be, that might be where we could do that, or where we could have that kind of term. And is that, is that, okay, never, never mind. I think it would like to go to public comment now, because I think that always brings out more questions for me. So if anyone out there has a comment they'd like to make on on this, not initial, but where we're at with the annexation policy ideas that we're talking about and looking at on the aim. Feel free to speak. You have three minutes. And if you're muted, you might have to, was it star six?
Yep, star six, if you're muted. I can't see people when I share my screen, so let me.
I don't see any hands raised.
I don't either.
So it doesn't appear that we have any public comment on this issue. On this item. So we will close the public comment and come back. Is there any, to the trustee, and to the trustees, are there any more comments or questions or recommendations that anyone has?
I, I have some.
Thanks, Karen.
Yeah. So along the lines of what, what we've discussed already. One way that we could approach the density or zoning is to say that an election would be triggered with an increase of density for the property. And in addition to the density and the acreage triggering an election, we might want to consider a change of use for the property.
I have a real quick question. What would that density, you know, increasing be based on? Like the neighboring ned properties and what they're zoned as? Or like if it's just land presently that has nothing on it, it would definitely be a change of
What the current density requirements for the Boulder County zoning for the property. So I think you need to have like 20 acres for a house, you know, so it would be the density, 35 acres. So the density that is currently required by the current Boulder County zoning. So a change in density.
Can I just step in just a little bit here, just to say that if you have an annexation by the fact that you, you, you have
that if you have an annexation by the fact that you, you, you have an annexation into the town, it will be, there will automatically be a change in zoning because you will go from the Boulder County zoning to Netherlands zoning. So all annexations have, I mean, they all have a, a change of zoning.
Yeah, I'm thinking more along the lines of if the annexation, the purpose of the annexation is to increase density, one of the purposes of it, that that should come to the voters, should trigger an election, just, just my recommendation. And a change of use, so if it's going from a private residence to a, I don't know, a lodging of some sort, a hotel or restaurant, that would trigger it. And, and one little note about the Lyons, five acres that triggers an election, I'm just looking at section 151340 of the Lyons Annexation Regulations. And it, it's either five or 10, depending upon where it's located. Properties that are located in the eastern corridor trigger an annexation at 10 acres, but not, not less. The, the other thing is on the, what, we talked about this before, the applicant paying for the election cost. So I think we should add that. And then on number nine of the review criteria, it says that the proposed design does not place the burden on the current residents of the town to provide for services, including but not limited water, transportation, arterial streets. Uh, do we have, I don't see a review criteria in there that says that the town is capable of providing utilities and services to the organic's property. Is that in there?
That's number five, I think.
At the town. Okay, so I, I, I would like to see some wording in there about capable currently and in the future. We have a lot of property that could be developed within the town boundaries. We have density that could be increased. And so I'm concerned about water and will we have enough water to fully build out the town and annex properties? So this is something that I'd be interested in, in in doing some research and analysis on to see what we're currently using as far as water is concerned and coming up with an estimate for a full build out of the town, what our water requirements would be. I'd hate to see us growing, expanding the boundaries and not be able to do our increased density for the residents that are currently here and in the future. People may want to build ADUs on their property in order to be able to stay in their home. And also that would provide a affordable rental for a resident. So some words along the lines of, of current and future, or maybe we could come up with some estimate and have like a more of a, uh, actual number in there. That's all my comments.
Erin, I like those comments. Those make a lot of sense. It's probably time for, only Eric and I were present when Erin, is it Erin Ladd came by, the water attorney, and gave us a big presentation. And we, we may need to have another one of those before we're done with this annexation, just to kind of see where we're at and what our future holds.
You're a mind reader.
Yeah, he's currently set to come on October 4th to do just that, to give that presentation, so.
So, so I did see that presentation and I looked at the, the presentation again, and it doesn't really answer those questions about what is our current water usage, number one? And then number two is build out of the town, what, what we would need for water.
So I think that you can turn to the MIP for some of that information. Because JVA did do kind of an evaluation of possible projects that would require annexation. And, and then the cost for building out the system. I think it gives us some, some sort of kind of preliminary data of costs. But I definitely think, you know, the Board of Trustees, in addition to a planned investment, there would be a benefit in evaluating additional impact fees. Because a planned investment is only going to take you so far that we're having to connect parcels that are not near current sewer or, or water line.
Yeah, that all seems really important. The, the, the information that I'm most interested in is, is how much water we're going to need in the future and what our current usage is. So, but thank you. I'll look at the MIP.
From what I understand, at least from the last report that we got, you know, and don't quote me on this, but I think that I'm general in the ballpark, is that we were using about 17% of our water rights as a town right now. Yep, that we were using a, a fraction of, of the rights that we actually have. But our water rights are different than the available water, right? Like that, those aren't necessarily the same thing. And one of those is easy to calculate because it's a hard number that you get from a water, from the state water board. The other one is very difficult to know the answer to, if not impossible. So that, that's a, it's, it's a tough one. And, you know, I, I can definitely see it working relative to our water rights as a town. But in terms of relative to what water will be available in the future and how much we'll need, that's going to be a calculation that's tough for anybody to make.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. So also in the MIP is the rate study. And the rate study has a section that talks about growth projection, Trustee Blakemore, but it's specific to the increase in the number of accounts over time. And of course, every account holder consumes different amounts of water. And so I do agree with Trustee Cummins' mouth, that will be hard to narrow in on. But I do feel like the rate study has, again, some preliminary data that can give us enough to, and it does include future projects. It talks about the addition of possible units in areas of town that would either require annexation or undeveloped parcels of town.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd like to look at it to see if I can come up with an estimate, not, yeah, thanks.
Miranda, do we have any plans for, I know we had discussed it, like increasing the reservoir that we tap into or finding a different water source other than Boulder Creek as our water rights?
So that is something.
Go ahead.
Yes, sorry, that is something Attorney Ladd does want to talk with the Board of Trustees about. Because it's something we need to, to evaluate is what is the current desire of this board on where to store those conditional water rights? And so he does intend to request to, to have that conversation with the Board of Trustees. Whether we do so on the 4th is something Mayor Beblin and I will have to sort out. Yeah, definitely.
It's like, it's important, wasn't there some, somebody had said, like, if we don't use the water rights, we lose them? Is that true? Or what does that mean?
So we do have to defend our conditional water rights in 20, February of 2024. And we have to show that we're doing kind of a due diligence and that we are trying to find permanent storage. And we're running out of time, you know, we're, we're hitting that 50 years where we, we definitely need to start to assess what is the final plan here? I don't want to say we're running out of time. It's still possible to have another extension. But after so much time has lasted, we do need to start really looking into this.
It, it is possible that in a year, we come up with a plan, right?
Absolutely.
Right, so it should be a priority.
Do we have to be breaking ground on something or like actually underway? What, what stage do we need to be by February 2024?
I don't know if there's a set stage. I think that in Water Corps is a unique beast and we just have to show our due diligence that we're actively evaluating opportunities and that we're pursuing those conversations or those, those situations that are before us, like where can we develop them and that we're not just waiting? We need to be doing any sort of active work. And I think in terms of what could be done this next year, maybe that's entering into some collaborative relationships, whether it's City of Boulder or a private entity to start to discuss the development of those actual water rights.
We do have a track record of doing that. The master of the plan itself has that information in it and demonstrates that the town has been working on that. So it's not like we're starting from zero.
Correct. Yeah, I just think it's, I think Attorney Ladd is just feeling like we do. It would be good because with every board is a change in sentiment of how you want to develop those conditional water rates. And that would be beneficial to know how this board feels so that we make sure that any additional effort placed into these conditional water rights are in the direction that mirrors those values of the board in the community.
So Miranda, I, I wonder what other towns and cities do to develop their conditional rights? Because other towns and cities are growing and so they'll need more water. And is it also a matter of proving that you have a need for the additional water? It seems like that's probably part of it and not just building the reservoirs.
No, it is. I mean, at least from my conversations with Attorney Ladd, it hasn't really been about demonstrating need that, that he was most concerned with. It was demonstrating storage capacity and that the condition of conditional right, like that they are conditional is because we have nowhere to store the water. And if we had somewhere to store the water, they could become permanent rights and not conditional at all.
I, I know we're getting way off topic here, but at some point, I'd like to walk the middle Boulder Creek to see where the opportunities are to store water. So.
In terms of annexation, what I think makes sense is to maybe add language regarding water and feasibility of the, any planned development with, you know, whatever the current situation is in town for water. Like I wouldn't want to pass ordinance language that was specific to 2022 in terms of, you know, our water situation, but one that, language that actually work in the future as well. So code wouldn't need to be amended all the time by, by other folks. So we can find language that demands that, you know, water be evaluated as part of criteria and that there's some maybe specific conditions that need to be met, some kind of threshold in terms of, you know, development potential, then that would make more sense to me. Something that's more like flexible enough to last beyond the next few years.
Is there, actually, let me just ask a quick question in that. So Eric, you said, so tying in, like, being specific about the language, so it, so it ties into, so it doesn't, doesn't, I don't know if I heard you right or not, but.
Yeah, let's talk between those time, you know, Netherlands has doubled its water rights somehow and is in a completely different circumstance than where now. We wouldn't want them to have to amend the code to account for that. We want to write code that, that works for the foreseeable future that doesn't cause, you know, potential messes down the line when things change. So if it were, you know, maybe something, maybe something that used, if we were to use numbers, then the numbers I would want to see would be percentages, right? And based on, you know, how, what percent of towns like water allocation would the development take out? Then if it's over a certain percentage, then, you know, I need additional review or something along those lines. But nothing that like put hard numbers on acre feet, for instance. Because that would seem inflexible and kind of bad policymaking for future boards.
That makes sense.
I'm sorry, just wanted to share something in the Lyons ordinance. And what Lyons requires is that the applicant shall provide a water rights report for the property prepared by a qualified water engineer or water attorney detailing water rights pertinent to the property to be annexed. And then it also requires that the applicant shall provide a D transferring all of those water rights to the town.
Yep, and I, that's why I added that one criteria down there that just says water rights. I mean, I, I wasn't going to go into the details of it, but I noticed that a few towns have something associated with that. So we should probably have something as well that makes sense for Ned. Maybe if, I don't know who's taking notes today, but whoever's taking notes, if we could ensure that things like the traffic study and that, maybe that report on water rights all gets kind of added to what a, what have I called it? And whatever we end up calling it, but what I call an annexation impact report, that that gets added to the list of things that maybe we require as part of that report. Because I didn't enumerate what that would entail. I only said there should be one.
Eric, do we have something in there about notifying adjacent properties when this annexation comes up?
Yeah, with specific, you know, how many days in advance that notification needs to happen, that mailers need to be provided with the application material in the first place for specific stakeholders. I did include a lot of that in there.
Okay.
And also the applicant having to sign the property. Yeah.
So that includes town of Netherlands, a property within the town of Netherlands as well as unincorporated Boulder County?
Yeah, I, I wrote in here referral to interested parties and that's step seven.
Okay.
So simultaneously with steps five and six, the town staff refer the application to all property owners within 300 feet of the property boundary in question, all rights holders, including right of right traversing the property, mineral estate owners and the Colorado Division of Wildlife.
Great.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Miranda or Attorney Madison, if you guys could give us an example or, you know, make a case for an annexation that would not require a vote.
So there are actually a few cases right now that I figure out there in the ether of, of folks who have expressed an interest. And there would be something along the lines of a single lot with a single house on it owned by a single person who simply wants to be part of town, maybe connect to town utilities. And it is not going to change the use or the character of the property at all. That would be a sub-five acre potentially annexation that would have little impact. And maybe would it need to, you know, if that property owner had to pay for an election, that seems like they would never annex because it would be overkill.
So what we're doing really with this policy is drawing the line between administrative approval and, and, and election.
No, one thing to note is that we're actually drawing the line between BOT approval and election. Because, and, and also the election will not be automatically triggered. That's, I think, important to note. The BOT would have to vote to refer it to the people, right? And they couldn't approve it without doing that, but the BOT could deny the application without the vote.
Wait, are you saying, this is Tanya, that even if it was a high-density, high-acreage project, it wouldn't automatically go to a vote? It would have to, we would have to make that choice?
We could just, we could just, we would have to vote if we wanted to approve it. But if we wanted to disapprove it, it wouldn't have to go to a vote. We could just not approve it as BOT.
Okay, perfect.
Could, if, say that again, you, you broke up on my end. You said if we wanted to approve it.
Then it would have to go to the people if it was, if it triggered the election criteria. But if we just wanted to not approve the application, we wouldn't need to send it to the voters. We would just not approve it.
Yeah, and that's where obviously the parameters got to be super clear. So I think it can't be very subjective. It's got to be like, we, we don't want to because we can't, because it doesn't meet the criteria.
Well, actually, just, just to point out, I think it should be clear that annexations are different from like a special review use application. It's not quasi judicial. It is a legislative decision. And so the Board of Trustees. It is a legislative decision. And so the Board of Trustees can decide, we don't want this property. We don't, we don't want to annex it and can even decide very quickly, can reject an application, basically. So you've got a, a huge amount of leeway in rejecting annexation applications.
Yeah, if you know, review criteria number one that I listed there, the Board of Trustees discretion is the first drive you review criteria as provided for by state law. It's up to us whether or not we even want to advance it to the level where it would trigger an election.
Okay, that makes, I mean, it is legislative, makes sense. It seems like it could get political easily, but, um, but, um, it's legislative, it's political, so yeah. Okay, that, that's a good clarification. I actually, I thought it was a little more objective.
So, um, in this, in this aim, I read that in lieu of a formal plan, we could use the comprehensive plan. Um, I'm trying to find that right now and I, I'm not, not finding it, but. So my question is, since, since our comprehensive plan does not show any areas outside of town that are available for annexation, does that mean if we use the comprehensive plan for a formal plan that we would not allow any annexations?
Well, it seems it turns out that I was not correct about the three mile plan. It's just that we are not required to maintain a three mile plan as a town, but if we want to annex, we still have to have one. So that kind of becomes moot. We need to generate that three mile plan regardless of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, this is under number 12 process. And 12B.
Yeah, that was, that was really just an idea that I had.
And, and I added the note about the comprehensive plan. So if your comprehensive plan is designated as your annexation three mile plan, which the towns is not, then you can't use it. But if you're updating the comprehensive plan, you could, that's something that you could do.
And how do we designate the comprehensive plan as the three mile planning document?
You just noted that way and, and include the information that's in your three mile plan that would need to be included in it.
I still don't think it's a terrible idea to approach the comprehensive plan that way and to include a planning document, even if that document includes no, you know, proposed annexations or external planning areas. I still think having that map would be useful in the comp plan.
We do have in the comp plan, there is a chapter on land use. And it does have maps in there, but nothing showing how the town will grow. And if it will outside of the boundaries.
Hi, this is Tanya. Again, I'm concerned about that clause on there because it says if it's in our three mile plan or comprehensive plan, it doesn't trigger an election even with high density or high acreage. And again, I don't think that we are the ones should, who should determine what triggers an election like that. I think, I think that, that's giving too much power to us.
Do agree with that.
I'd be happy enough to not see that exemption be made. I'm not tied to it.
Okay, thank you.
I like, I like what Eric is getting at though, in terms of the BOT should be able to reject proposals. So any proposal that meets the criteria can only be approved with an election. They could certainly be rejected with simply the BOT's vote.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that either. This is Tanya.
Yeah, and that's a power granted to us by state law. I don't think we should be taking it away from ourselves.
So, so as far as the comprehensive plan and the three mile plan, exempting annexations from going to the voters. Yeah, I'm fine with removing that. And however, I think it's in there if the, the town makes a concerted effort to actually plan their growth, you know, maybe they need a new, a property for a school or a municipal building of some sort or, you know, and so, or a park system. But I, I don't know that we, we have not, we don't have any plans like that currently. And I think we could amend the annexation procedures if we did develop plans like that.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to amending it in the future. Like you said, if there was a very organized plan that was approved by everybody in this community, just, I mean, right now, nobody's really hardly commenting or listening. So it definitely would have to go through many more channels.
Yeah, it might be a terrible idea to reserve a section number for exemptions, even if we don't have any now.
It's probably a good idea, actually.
And another thing I wanted to make sure was clear is that I didn't put the comprehensive plan as a review criteria, kind of because it was rolled in with that other idea. But if we have no three mile planning document, I think that the comprehensive, it should have to conform to the comprehensive plan of the town. The, any, any annexation, that should be a criteria.
Yes, I agree because a comprehensive plan has policies regarding land use. So I, I think that any land that we annex into the, the town should adhere to those policies.
And it's our most thoroughly publicly vetted planning document. It only seems democratically correct that it be strongly considered when evaluating any annexation.
Okay, any other questions, comments or recommendations? The next steps? And then, if not Jennifer, Rand, any other next steps? Or, you know, you, you had talked about some at the beginning, Jennifer, is that, are those our next steps? Or is there anything else you want to add at this point?
Well, like I said, with like direction from the Board of Trustees, it seems like to me the next step is working on drafting an ordinance and coming back before the Board of Trustees with that draft ordinance based on what you have all discussed tonight.
I'd like to see that personally.
Me too. Karen, Tanya and Jesse?
Yeah, no, I think that's the next step. See what you've gathered from our comments and bring into a document that we can amend it again if we need to or not. And yeah, again and again.
Yeah, I'd say I'd like to see if there were, you know, aspects of that annexation impact report that, you know, town staff, if town staff have recommendations as to what would be useful for them to have in such a report and what, you know, the applicant would be responsible for, for providing in terms of any kind of studies. That would be really, I think, helpful for us to know if you have recommendations. Because, you know, there's only so many things I can, I can actually think of myself, but. And then the other thing was, I just wanted to summarize what we were talking about. In terms of election criteria, in terms of the next draft, we would as a board like to see, this is a question. Would we like to see five acres or a change in zoning from adjacent zones in the town of Netherlands as the trigger? In election?
I mean, yeah, I would. I, I, the actual criteria for that is to be determined, but I would like to see something related to density as well as acreage. This is Tanya.
What, what are the zones in unincorporated Boulder County? I wonder.
Yeah, I mean, it does seem, I mean, just from a practical kind of perspective, that I'm not saying that this is a hill I'm going to die on, but it seems to me reasonable to say if you're going to request an annexation and your property is adjacent to Netherlands mountain residential zoning and you intend on the property being mountain residential zoning, and that is your proposal, then maybe that wouldn't be an election trigger unless it was five acres or more.
Yeah, something like that. Well, because, yeah. Adding a house on an acre in Big Springs wouldn't be a big deal per, really.
Right, exactly, exactly. And it's going to be a change. It's going to be a change of density from Boulder County one way or the other. So maybe we should focus on our zoning rather than theirs.
So I'm, uh, as Attorney Mattson mentioned before, any annexation will be a change in zoning from the Boulder County zoning to the town of Netherlands. I'm looking at the Boulder County zones. They have quite a few agriculture, business, commercial, economic development, estate residential, forestry, general industrial, historic, light industrial, multiple family manufactured home, mountain institutional, rural community one, rural community two, rural residential, suburban residential and transitional. So each, uh, so I think we're, we're gonna have to to do a map there. And one way to approach this is to create a matrix and then show what, going from one to another zone if it requires a an election.
Can, can we, is there a map that we could just, a Boulder County map that we could look at and just see exactly what
Yeah, I can put this.
Borders the town and then we, then we know what we're talking about because we're only going to annex so far into Boulder County. So you know exactly what borders us.
Let me see if this will.
I mean, it, well, um, like she's saying, it's going to be different from Boulder County the minute it hits town. So it's going to be on the border of a, of a zoning that already exists in the town of Netherlands. So I think if it's different from that is more important than what it's going to be changed from. That makes sense.
Okay, so Boulder County zone, zoning around the town of Netherlands is all green. And that is forestry is what they're showing.
So it would be a change of use, whether I cut it.
Forestry.
Well, I mean, that's, is that public land though? Or is that, is that private land?
I'll put, I'll put a link to the, the map I'm looking at in the chat. So I think maybe I, I, I feel like we all agree on the intent of this zoning or density change. And so maybe Eric and Jennifer could come up with a proposal that we could look at instead of us trying to decide exactly what that will be right now, because we know what we're trying to achieve and we all agree on that.
It seems to me that there's two main approaches that we could have approach. One is sort of make the basis Netherlands zoning criteria and, you know, make the trigger based on what adjacent zones are already present in the town of Netherlands to that particular piece of property. Or we use Boulder County zoning and evaluate it based on what it's coming from versus what it's going to change to. And for that, I do think there would need to be a matrix and we would need to decide on each line of the matrix. You know, does this trigger an election, yes or no, and keep, and go down that line. So we would need that matrix kind of pre-filled with all the potential changes that it could be. And then we'd have to, you know, decide point by point as a board how we wanted to see it. Does that make sense, Attorney Mattson? Is the kind of two mechanisms we're talking about here?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
All right. I mean, I, I like the cleanliness of using Netherlands zoning because we don't rely on Boulder County who might change their zoning terms and change their zoning rules and regulations. And then we would have to find a way to update our code every time they change something. That matrix would need to be updated, which seems a bit messy. But I think I'm right now leaning towards moderately based on Ned zoning because it's something we control at least.
Yeah, I'm kind of feeling the same way, but I'm open to hearing both possibilities and seeing, you know, how complicated using Boulder County would be or, or actually like what exactly, I have to look it up. What, what a forestry zoned acreage, what does that mean in Boulder County? What can you do?
Right.
Yeah.
It's 35 acres, but it gets very complicated with uses. The uses can be agriculture, business, agriculture, commercial business, community uses, forestry uses, industrial uses, lodging, mining, recreation uses, residential uses, single, residential, single family dwelling or group care or foster home, transportation uses, utility. So.
Yeah, again, I kind of agree with Eric because we understand our, our zoning a little better. So if this lands adjacent to neighborhood commercial, we kind of know what that entails. And if it's adjacent to Big Springs, we also kind of know what that entails.
The only thing about adjacency though, what if it's adjacent to two different, multiple zones, more than one? Then I guess we.
Go with the higher, I guess. The higher density. I don't know.
We need to look, I probably look at all these cases and see if we can come up with some general rules.
We should look at the border of town and look at possible houses that would be, that could and see if that is actually happens. Is there any land that borders both zones? Like, I'm not suggesting this at all, but the Beaver Park Estates or whatever they're called, you know, that's adjacent to Fifth Street and all of that, you know? Is that, is that adjacent to two different zones? I think it's probably not, but I don't know. Depends on which direction you look at, I guess. So that, that is a good point.
Jesse, anything else here?
Mary Gilling, are you open to, to putting this back open to public comment? Seems like maybe there was a member of the community who wanted to speak, but had stepped away.
Yes, definitely.
Dawn, are you there? And if you're on the phone, you'll need to press star six. Maybe she stepped away again. Dawn, are you there?
Okay.
If she jams the next minute or two, I think she said Dawn, I'm not sure, Dawn, but we'll, we'll, we'll hear from the public. But if not, we'll move on. There'll be chances to.
I, I have one more question. Sorry, this is Tanya. Would the election be the town of Netherlands or would it be the library district or the fire department district? Or like, what, what's, what's our probably the, the bigger one, wouldn't you think?
I think we're only allowed to do a town of Netherlands election.
Oh, you couldn't use the library district or the.
I don't, I don't think that's within our powers to poll folks outside of town.
Okay, we're shaking their head. Okay, just, that was my last question. Thanks.
I, yeah, I think, man, those two options of whether we tied in the Netherlands zoning criteria or, you know, Boulder County zoning, I think it'd be, I lean towards Netherlands. I'd like to learn more about the Boulder County zoning. I think one thing you said, Eric, that is if we tie into theirs and they make changes, then we're kind of bound to make changes along the way. And that, that gets tedious and hard to keep track of. And chances are it'd be easier to drop balls over time. That'd be less likely to go that way, but it'd be good. I'd like to learn more about it nonetheless. So I think the next step. So I think the next steps then, Jennifer, we talked about would be, um, you start to draft an ordinance based on things we're talking about. Anything else you need?
Another thing that I did in here, um, would, was that, uh, there's the possibility that we have a draft agreement, annexation agreement, um, that is used as kind of a boilerplate that we can approve as a, as a board. And is just so that we have that in place, so we know what it looks like.
Good idea.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea and it will help us kind of iron out the, um, review criteria and the procedure and process.
And so that agreement could include a clause that, uh, you know, locked in the agreement for a certain period of time as just sort of an example of what that would look like. Sorry.
Yeah, I, you know, I'd love to see something like that in there.
One, one quick question, maybe, um, does this, will the annexation, um, application go before the planning commission first?
Good question.
It seems like maybe it should since they're the experts in land use.
Yeah. So if you look at the, the, the procedure that I mapped out there, that step five is referral to the planning commission. The, the reason why is so that we don't waste the planning commission's time if we already know we're going to deny the application. Right? So it, it, there's communication with the BOT first to ensure that they want to see it go in front of the planning commission and the planning commission spend time on that, on that document, if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thanks for pointing that out.
Also, I think it's required that we do that. I think we have to determine if the annexation petition is in substantial compliance with state laws requirements, uh, before it moves forward.
And possibly the BZA, it says, if it required new zoning.
Yep. That was something I put in there. I think I'd like to see it unified. That it go to the BZA.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Suppose one last thing that I would like to, for us to consider is just, um, for there to be some kind of pitch or some kind of proposal, some kind of benefit to the town for us to bother with it. So, you know, and that could be alignment with various planning documents. It could be alignment with a Trails Master Plan. It could be alignment with a comprehensive plan with Envision 2020. Um, there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of plan, planning documents that are out there, plans that are in place and also, you know, there, there could be things that are of substantial benefit to the town that we haven't planned for or that we haven't anticipated that I would like for us to be open to and to build language that invites unforeseen opportunities to the town and unforeseen benefits that, you know, maybe we never planned for, but this could be something that could be a real great benefit and, um, it's compelling enough that we want to put it to a vote of the, of the general public and say, yeah, we haven't planned for this. We haven't, you know, we didn't see this opportunity coming, you know, 10 years ago, but this is a great opportunity for us and let's, um, let's give the, the entire public a chance to weigh in and, and, uh, we can pick this apple if we like as a community. So I don't know how to articulate that in language per se, but, um, so.
Jesse, that's, I think that's a great point. And if you look at review criteria number three, um, that is, uh, actually required by state law, uh, that we determine that there is a community interest between the proposed annexation property and the town. And that's left broadly up to interpretation even at the state level. And so that determination could be argued on the part of the applicant, you know, on, on all the criteria that you just mentioned. Uh, any, any planning document that the town had could be used to demonstrate community interest.
So I heard the next step is a draft ordinance. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And a draft, uh, annexation agreement based on that ordinance.
Is that, is that clear, Jennifer or Miranda? Any questions? What we need?
That's clear for my end.
The, uh, does the draft, the two drafts need to be reviewed by anyone other than the Board of Trustees? Staff or a planning commission, maybe?
I think we would want to run it through all the department heads, um, just to give their feedback. But I guess, yeah, is that the desire of the board to have the planning commission to review as well? Or bring it back to the board first?
I, I would like to bring it back to the board first because we, we got our head, especially Eric, um, and those of you guys have been here longer. Have your heads wrapped around it more, especially looking at the draft agreement, in my opinion. And then when we get it where we like it, then, then bounce it to the planning commission, um.
Oh, yeah, I, I also want to see it again.
Yeah. And then after that, I think it should go to every board if we can in the same month. I mean, ideally that would be cheese. I guess November, I mean, I don't know when else we were going to do it, but it'd be great if we could pull it off by October. If we could get it to the other boards by October, I'd be very pleased.
Yeah, we, we probably send it to the BZA and, I mean, the BZA meets in October, so let's make that a deadline.
So see, we have advisory board to look at it as well. I mean, uh, we have advisory boards, we should use them in their, uh, place where public go and we can get more feedback than maybe we're getting in a session like tonight, so.
And kind of like the solar thing that's went through the boards, just we send whatever we send to all of them and we don't let one of them edit it and send it to the next. We send it to all of them and then we get all their feedback.
It's relevant to Pro Sap as well, for sure.
Yeah, but we send it to them and that might expedite the turnaround.
Yep.
So if, if we review it in, uh, BOT reviews in October and then the boards in November and then back to the BOT in December, is that what we're talking about?
Easy. If we can do it. When's the BZA meet? Miranda, remind me which week. It's a Wednesday.
Second, it's a second Thursday, so.
October.
October thirteenth, yep.
Oh, my gosh.
That's quickie.
That's really soon.
No, it doesn't mean the BZA can't get together separate from that.
Yeah, because it, for all I know, they don't even have a meeting scheduled and, and they're grossly understaffed. Well, but, um, yeah, if we can get this out in October, you know, then, then try to get into as many boards in October as possible, worst case.
I'm just curious, Attorney Mattson, where that timeline falls for you? Because they'll be giving it back to the Board of Trustees on October the fourth. That's like three weeks away.
Yeah, I could do that.
Yeah, I don't know if we have room that day, maybe. Well, I'm just looking at it, either the fourth or eleventh or eighteenth.
I, sorry, this is Tanya, and I hate to ask this question, but I don't understand the Boulder County zoning. When it's forestry, it says thirty-five acres. What does that mean?
Probably minimum.
It can't be subdivided into more than, you know.
But then how did Magnolia Road and Ridge Road and all those other neighborhoods get developed? Because those people have just like acre or two acre lots. They're not on thirty-five acres.
Yeah, well, it, and how, yeah, probably it was done before this.
So I just, yeah, I just, I was just like trying to understand it.
Unit development like Little Bear.
I'm sorry, what's that, Eric? I didn't hear you.
It was a planned unit development and there is, there is a mechanism for them to approve, you know, different uses with an application. Yeah.
Okay. Um, great. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to move on.
Yeah, me too.
So thanks for all your info, Eric, and, um, thanks, Jennifer and Miranda. Next steps, thanks everybody for your input. So that was, um, to discussion item three point one, we're moving on to discussion item three point two, um, regarding our trustee vacancy. Um, and Miranda, would you? Talk to me.
Yes, so we didn't get to this at the last meeting, so we thought we would bring it back today, um, just because the Board of Trustees has until October seventh to determine how you want to fill the vacancy that was left when trustee Baumhofer resigned. Just a reminder, you have an option to fill the vacancy by appointment or by ordering a special election. And so we did just want to kind of talk through how the board wants to handle that vacancy. Uh, as staff, our recommendation is to do so through appointment and to have an application process where anyone who's interested in seeking that trustee position can submit a letter of interest. Typically with any boarding commission vacancy, we do a twenty-one day application period. That could be shortened if the board had a desire, but either way, we do recommend that you consider appointment and then the application process. But would love to hear feedback from the board on how you want to handle this vacancy.
So there's a specific, um, question before, before the board is how do, how does the BOT want to handle filling our vacancy? So we'll go around kind of similarly, initial comment, clarifying questions from the, the trust, and then we'll open up for public comment, three minutes per comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board. Any clarifying questions up front? All right, then I'm going to go to pub, public comment. I'd like to open up for public comment. Three minutes. Star six, if you are muted.
He's got his hand up there, Billy.
Um. Oh, there we go. Uh. Okay, thanks, Steve. I don't know if it's okay if I talk, uh, hey, Steve Sepec, uh, seven-year resident. I live at, uh, East Second Street and work at Tin Shed, and I would just like to, um, say that if the my opinion is the path of least resistance would be to go with the second in line from the last election. Um, specifically if trustee Baumhofer had resigned just before the ballot had been written, my opinion is that it would have been a pick-two kind of ballot. And I was just behind Jesse Severs and my main concern is that in the last trustee meeting, there was a stalemate four times, um, and I really would just love to see that avoided in the future. And, um, yeah, if you want to appoint, I'm here and I would love to serve my community. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Uh, if anybody has any specific questions for me, I'm, I'm always here and available. I don't know if tonight is the right format to, to field those questions, but I am here, so. There you go.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Does anyone else have any comments? Seeing none, and feel free to chime in if I miss you and you're trying, if, if you just stepped out and you come back and you want to have a comment, but, um, we're going to move back, move back for now. We'll close the public comment and we'll bring it back to the trustees and hear from all the trustees. About what's your preferences?
I'm personally happy enough to go with staff's recommendation. Um, I think there being an opportunity for, for folks to submit their application, uh, is a good and you know, semi-democratic way of going about, uh, filling this vacancy. Even if it's not a full election, which does cost money and, uh, risks real election fatigue on the part of our residents, uh, I think. And it wouldn't even happen until January anyway, is what, is what I understand. So, yeah, I, I think that I would be happy enough to, to go with staff's recommendation to have an application period. Um, I, I think that, you know, Steve is a very strong candidate for the position, uh, I think would remain so even with an application process. But I do think that that's kind of the best way to mitigate the, you know, lack of a democratic, of a truly democratic process in this particular appointment is to open it up for applications.
Thanks, Eric. Who else?
Yeah, I, um, I am in favor of going with the staff recommendation, um, and, uh, leaving the application period open for twenty-one days as we typically do to make sure that we um, get everyone who's interested in the position, get them, their applications in. So this particular, um, term would be, uh, about one and a half years, um, as opposed to two or four years. And I think it was really important for us to do an election for the mayor. Um, uh, that's what I heard from the community is that they, uh, really wanted to, um, have a, a stronger input into who, who the mayor was. And so, um, but this time it's just a single trustee. And in the past, we have done appointments. Um, and, uh, I'd want to do the applications to make sure that um, everyone who's interested in the position has a chance to apply and to speak, um, before the Board of Trustees.
Thanks, Karen.
Uh, this is Tanya. I agree on principle, just because of legal reasons, it's important we follow the protocol that the town has followed in past situations like this. That is the only reason I would support that. I personally am in favor of just appointing Steve today, just to get another person on board ASAP. And since we just had an election, it does seem like anybody who was interested had a ample amount of time to get their name on the ballot and run. And, um, so it's not like, you know, we didn't just do this two weeks ago. Um, but I understand for legal reasons, it is important that we do things the same way that we've always done it because we don't want people to come up and say that's not fair. So that, but it just, I do think it would be easier and really effective and to give the person who wants to do it and the opportunity to do it. Steve, who seems like a great candidate, but I get it.
Thanks, Tanya. Jesse?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with doing the, the application process. I'd also be fine with appointing Steve. I think there's, there's a case to be made for following precedents of how it's been done in the past. And if we've, we've done, I'm not too familiar with how it's been done in the past with appointment. But I, I assume it's been done similar with an application process and so on and so forth. Yeah, no real strong opinions about it to, to sway, sway the crowd, I don't think, at this point.
Thanks, Jesse. Um, I have a, I have a written, um, Tom and I had talked about before when he knew he wouldn't be um, attending and he had sent me an email giving his opinion. Jennifer, can I read that? Is that?
Yeah, that's fine. If you, yep.
Okay, he's, uh, Tom and I talked on Saturday, or we talked on Friday and then we were texting back and forth on Saturday and he sent this email Saturday morning. Billy, as we discussed, my preference for filling the Baumhofer vacancy, having given it a little more thought, would be to appoint Steve now. He was vetted in the last election in terms of voter scrutiny, as evidenced by.
Wait, you're glitching.
What's that mean? Oh, can you not hear me?
I, I couldn't hear you myself. Maybe it's me.
Okay. This is the board's prerogative and given the urgency of what we need to get done this fall. This is the board's prerogative, and given the urgency of what we need to get done this fall and the number of tied votes stalemate in our first meeting last week, we need to fix this pronto. We've had two elections in twenty twenty-two. Don't think we have patience for a third. If it's confidence in our governance, we want to build, we need to start delivering results in Q4. Cannot wait until next year.
Yeah. You gotta wait three more weeks at least, and that's how many more meetings that, you know, we're meeting every freaking week. So that's a lot of possible stalemates we could be having.
Yeah, well, three more. You know, it, you know, I, how, how soon could you, I mean, how soon, Miranda, can this? If we go through the application process for three weeks, what, when would you put out the announcement?
I think the, obviously, this is a discussion. So if the board wanted to move this to action and vote on it, we could post it.
Okay. Let me, let me comment.
Is there any chance to do it less than three weeks? Why is it gotta, I know that the past has been three weeks, but we're kind of in an urgent situation.
Well, I just want to rebut the idea that there are stalemates. There are no stalemates in our code. It's not possible. So if it's three to three, the measure fails. That's what we learned. So it just needs to be a majority voting in favor. So there's no real stalemate. Like every, we can still make decisions. We won't be kind of a hung board in, in that sense. So just wanted to alleviate some.
Okay, yeah.
Three to three defaults to the measure, a measure failing.
No, right? It defaults to the no.
And
To the rejection of the
Yeah, all the tie votes were unimportant at the last meeting. They were like extending the meeting ten minutes or something. And I feel if it's a really something that's meaningful and important that, you know, we'll probably discuss it in order to, you know, sway that one person one way or the other. Just my opinion. And then maybe we'll have, you know, not everyone at the meetings for the next three weeks.
I know I will miss one, actually, in four weeks, but yeah. So I
Can I just speak to shortening? It is possible to shorten the timeline even, you know, a week or two weeks. So that you could have the person, you could review the applications that you're meeting on the fourth and appoint someone at that regularly scheduled meeting. But it would be ideal to then do a two-week application period of a due date of the twenty days.
Yeah, I would be down with that. If anyone's not paying attention, then they really shouldn't be appointed anyway, to be honest.
Yeah, why can't we just have a brief open window and say, hey, Steve is the frontrunner at this point. And if anyone wants to come in and try to convince the BOT that they would be better than Steve, you know, you have a week to put in your application. Otherwise, we're prepared to appoint Steve at our next regular scheduled meeting.
Maybe let me jump actually, you know, I know that the work session on the twenty-seventh is going to be BOT goal. I guess one thing maybe to consider is if you wanted that person to participate, in which case you would maybe want to adjust that deadline a little bit more.
Yeah, it's not like we have to do week, week increment, like durations for application process. We could say twelve days.
Right, by next Friday.
Magically, it happens by the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
But you think, give people ten days and then ask for an application due date of Friday, the twenty-third. And then use the twenty-seventh as a special meeting where you meet with the applicants prior to engaging in the BOT goal discussion. Just food for thought.
Could, could you? Could you say that again, Miranda? I didn't catch it off.
Yeah, so I was saying you could have applications submitted by, or letters of interest by five o'clock on Friday, the twenty-third. And then on the, the meeting schedule for the twenty-seventh, make it a special meeting and use the first part to meet with the applicants and select doing the official appointment. And then the second part of the meeting is used for the BOT goal discussion.
Um.
Go ahead.
And you would, you would post the vacancy tomorrow.
We'd have to, we'd have to, I want to make one comment before we do this, but if we decided to do this, we'd move from discussion item to action item. We'd get clear on what we're voting on, make a motion, we'd vote.
Randy, has anyone heard of others who are interested in joining the Board of Trustees?
I've not. I mean, obviously, we know that Steve has submitted that letter of interest in the form of public comment. I have not heard from anyone else.
Uh, maybe Riley, Riley? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, uh, do we need to make a motion to move this to an action item?
I'd like to talk first.
Okay.
Mostly listen. Um, I just want to say, yeah, initially, I mean, I'll, I'll go through my process a bit, like a couple months ago. Tom and I were talking, I was like, you know, really, you know, we want to instill trust. I think it needs to be an election, you know, because then this gives it more credibility. And then Tom, at the time, was like, no, we should appoint. And then we ended up, oddly, when we talked on Friday, we had kind of flipped, where he was actually thinking an election on Friday. And I was like, well, maybe we should just appoint because, you know, yeah, I guess I see now we've had an election now in April, August, we got midterms and ballot measures in November. We've got three elections already going on this year, so an election this name. So I think we've all agree that an election is just a bad idea and pushes it out too far. So I think an appointment is reasonable and I think there is precedent. I don't know if it's always been three weeks or not, but you are putting out there that this term could be shortened. I think it's a good point that there is no stalemates. There's just rejected motions. There are no stalemates. So I think ultimately, I, I think that we should appoint, but I think to be fair, given the fact that we have had two elections and we've had people, you know, run who haven't gained office, putting it out there, opening up to everyone, you know, Steve is a strong perform very perform, did well in the last election. And so I think he, you know, he definitely brings that to the table, but putting out an application, and I do think it's reasonable to tighten it up and make it short enough that we, remind me, Miranda, whether we were talking about doing something else as a special session on the twenty-seventh? But if not, this would be a perfect thing to move in there with, with the BOT goals. So I, so I ultimately think maybe a ten, twelve day application process, putting it out tomorrow if we can, would be what I'd lean towards. So then so yes, Karen, I think what we need to do now is a motion, right, Miranda and Jennifer, to turn this from a discussion item to an action item? Would someone care to make that motion?
Uh, this is Todd. Go ahead.
I move that we move the agenda item for trustee vacancy from a discussion to an action item.
So there's a motion on the floor that we moved, the motion on the floor from Karen, trustee Blakemore, that we moved this discussion item about the trustee vac, vacancy into making it an action item tonight.
Yeah, I second that. This is Tanya.
Tanya seconds it. And so I think the question before the board, well, actually, no, I guess we got to vote on that. So can we take a roll call?
Trustee Cooms is smile?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
Mayor Giblin?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll need help here with the language as we go, but um, we, we are turning this question before the board of how does the BOT want to handle the vacancy? We've, we've talked about looking at the recommendation from the staff that we fill the vacancy through appointment. They recommend that we use an application process where anyone interested in seeking appointments and it's a letter of interest. Typically, this is posted for three weeks. However, that timeline can be shortened if that is the desire of the BOT. So I think that's what we want to nail down now is, is, is the timeline for this, you know, a period of time for people to turn in applications to be appointed. Who wants to propose a specific time?
Let's see if I can get it. Go ahead. Yeah, ten days, yeah.
So ten days, so ten days from, so ten days from tomorrow, because tomorrow's zero, so it would be actually right Saturday, the fourteenth, is that right?
We wouldn't want to do it Saturday because Tom's down and will be here to accept.
I'm sorry.
Friday, that the September twenty-third would be the due date.
So it's nine days, yeah.
Well, people can still sign it to us electronically on the weekends. We're just won't be open for physical delivery.
Yeah, but I, I would really like to make the, the names of the folks who apply public as soon as possible. Especially so that if, you know, anybody wanted to talk to them, that could be done because it'll be an action item probably at the meeting. And so there'll be public comment and we won't be able to get public comment on, you know, the potential applicants unless unless people know who the applicants are in advance.
You can do a week and have it do five o'clock on Wednesday, the twenty-first.
Yeah, or nine days is fine, too.
And we will obviously release the applications with any resumes that are turned in. They'll be a part of the agenda packet that goes out on Friday, next Friday.
Eric, would Friday, the twenty-third be reasonable amount of time for people to get that? Their names out there, or would you like it to be sooner?
Yeah, so if, maybe if we were doing noon on Friday, then it could come out with the agenda packet. Is that possible, Miranda?
They would go on the agenda packet. You're saying is it possible to add them in?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we would just really, we would be prepared to release the agenda right after five o'clock with all of the added attachments.
So maybe by five PM, so end of business on Friday would be the deadline. And then they could be releasing over the weekend, people could, could use the applications.
Right.
All right, so how do we say this so we can vote on it?
I'll, I'll try. I move that the BOT fills the vacancy through appointment. Town staff notifies the, of the, of applications being available tomorrow, September fourteenth. The vacancy is open until Friday, September twenty-third, five PM.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Nope.
I think we're good. So I, so the motion that's in front of us, and correct me if anyone wants to add or change something, is that if, that the BOT wants to fill this vacancy through appointment and we're intend for the town staff to open up this application process tomorrow, September fourteenth, and open it up for nine days, and applications would be due by Friday, September twenty-fourth, third, September twenty-third, by five PM.
Okay.
Can we take a roll call?
Yes, trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Cooms is smile?
Yes.
Mayor Giblin? Mayor Giblin?
Couldn't hear you, Eric. Yes.
Mayor Protem Mohol? Oh, I'm so sorry. Trustee Severs. I'm sorry, that was my fault. Trustee Se, okay, and trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Motion passes. So thanks a bunch. Miranda, anything else you need from us on this?
No, we'll get that posted in the morning and push it out. I guess just tell people.
Yeah.
On our website and social media before end of day tomorrow. But if people, they can always reach out. And then it looks like Barb is going to publicize it in the newspaper as well about the vacant.
Great. I encourage anyone on this call to either apply or, or tell others to look forward to reviewing the resumes, letters of interest. That is discussion item three point two. Yes, it is. So bringing it back up, is there any other business or anything? Any other business anyone would like to bring up?
Yeah, I was, I second you.
Uh, could someone take a roll?
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Cooms is smile?
Yes.
Mayor Giblin?
Yes.
And trustee Severs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Mason. Time, everyone, tonight.
Everybody.
Have a good evening.